We're going to call our work session to order. And we're changing the order of the agenda just a hair at the beginning. So we're going to go ahead and have a moment of silent prayer and/or reflection if you'd prefer. So we'll do that now. We'll give you real quick. If you'll take roll call.
Hi, Lenny. Alan Ward?
Here.
John Mastin?
Here.
Kathy Cox?
Here.
Nicole Cohen?
Here.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we're going to move on to, this isn't the agenda for today, this is next Tuesday's. We're still.
Yeah.
Call. Thank you. Okay, can I get a motion to review and accept the agenda for this session?
So moved. Second.
This is Fleming. John Mastin?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Alan Ward?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes. All right, so I guess I'm going to do the walking through today. Diana Asire, our superintendent, unfortunately, her mother passed away unexpectedly. She's not expected to return until just before the board meeting next Tuesday, so I hope you will all keep her in your thoughts and prayers. She normally does this section, so we're going into the consent calendar. I don't know if there's any questions on the minutes. I have not gotten through all the minutes yet, so I may very well have corrections next Tuesday. I don't know if anybody has anything. Okay. Let's see, we are going through to the personnel report. Any questions about employment or separations? And then we did make a change to, now included in the consent calendar, we're going to have the approval for overnight and out-of-state travel. And we're trying to get it to a standardized form, so it's just quicker. And it's not that we don't want to hear it from our students, because we do, but they get a lot of opportunities to speak in public, so that portion really slows everything down and almost makes it a little confusing sometimes if everybody isn't following, you know, answering the same questions. So I think it'll be easier for the board, and then we can pull things if we have questions. But I like the new formatting, and I like that it highlights how many days missed of school there is, because that's one of the questions that I generally have. So whoever decided to put that in, kudos, great job. I don't have any questions on any of the upcoming travel. I don't know if anybody else does. All right, then we're right into action items out of the consent agenda. And action item 5.1 is the second presentation for policy for the EDB. Let's see, what do we got? School board meetings, the agenda, and the EDB agenda. I do, I have tons of notes there. So, I don't know. I'm on BEDB-dE. And then, since this is going to be a board policy, I'm wondering if we shouldn't have it outlined, you know, one routine opening of meeting, then 1.1, 1.2, 1.3. You don't have to take notes on all that right now, but this is, as I was going through it, I think it's important. When we get down to four, which is the approval of the consent calendar, I'm not sure why we call it a consent calendar. I've always noted as a consent agenda, so unless I'm missing something.
I have a suggestion.
Okay.
In that regard. Normally, your upper-level numbers, your 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, indicate the broad brushstrokes on the agenda.
Sure.
The sub-numbers generally indicate.
Within that.
Within that.
Sure.
And so perhaps if we put the numbers in on the broad brushstrokes.
1 through 10.
And then we say can include.
I'm fine with that.
And then that way, whatever we need to stack under those, we can stack under those.
Okay.
Can I ask, Terry, do you know why it's called a consent calendar? Has it always been that way?
It's just because it's done monthly, so they call it a calendar.
Okay.
Most agendas that I've reviewed from other school districts call it that, too.
Kind of belongs to the world of education.
So it's unique to education?
Yes.
Okay. All right. It doesn't matter to me, and just as I was reading, why is that called a calendar? And then I wondered, under approval of consent calendar, we've got approval of minutes that always shows up first, and then after the approval of minutes is the approval of modification of the agenda. So if we modify the agenda, wouldn't that be the first thing? And again, this is just a.
Some other school districts that have legal counsel.
So, do you understand what it looks like?
Well, when we approve the minutes, we're approving something that happened in the past. The agenda is for the upcoming agenda.
That's true, and that might be why it's there. It just seems like if you're going to modify your agenda, you would do that before you voted to accept the consent agenda, thank you, or calendar, sorry. See, I have it stuck as agenda, because that's the board's supervisors, and every other meeting is our agenda.
I see.
And then I wanted to talk about, let's see, so under, we don't have the approval of travel, because this is all new. So I'm wondering if we shouldn't have another item under consent agenda, 4.1.5, approval of travel, and just leave it general, not specific?
Well, I mean, are you going to number all of these out?
Well, they're numbered out on every.
Well, right, but I mean. And under that, should include, may include.
Except you do those same things. You're not going to modify, you're not going to decide one day in the routine opening to the meeting that you're going to change it.
But you have the shoulds and the mays.
Okay.
And do those actually need subnumbering, or should those just be on a list?
Okay.
Because what happens is when you put them in a specific order, and you put the numbers next to them, now if you had any changes, you'd have to come back and rerun this.
Okay. Well, I'm fine with leaving the numbers out, but we could still add, instead of other annual requirements, like at states now, not that we can't have that one in there, but travel.
Right.
To add that in there.
I agree.
And then I would like to see, at least it match, because there's a lot of people who will start paying attention to education that have never done it before, like I did at one point. And when you start to look at the agenda versus the policy, it'd be nice if it matches up. So number five, I would like to see it say, old business dash or slash action items, just so that when they're looking at what's put out, it matches. And then same for six, new business slash or dash action items. Under seven, which is informational reports, the summary of current events, and then the subsections underneath, I know that we've discussed, or a lot of people have discussed committees, that would be a place where committees would go, so I don't know if that's getting ahead of ourselves to discuss that before we actually have any committees, but that would be the place where committees would go. So I don't know if that's putting the cart before the wheel, but I'd hate to do that and then develop a committee next month and then have to go back and.
Would the committees go under superintendent's report?
Well, it would go under informational reports, under seven. It would go under.
Just denied by itself?
Right.
Okay.
Right. So you would have governing board committees, superintendent report, directors' report, and then board, governing board member reports. Does that make sense? And then call to public, and then number nine, communications. So we've got the board suggestions for future agenda items. And then I'd like to change the news conference to press slash clarifying questions, just because news conference sounds, I don't know, we don't ever hold a news conference, it just doesn't make sense, but it is a point that we should, if the press is attending, we should ask, is there any clarifying questions? So that was, that was it.
May I get a copy of your paper?
I will, absolutely. And then the next one is BEDD rules of order. The only change I want to see there is, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, the fifth bullet point down, a motion to, it says table is in order at any time. Such a motion requires a second is limited to being considered only once on any given agenda item, no discussions in order. So I just want to strike out table and put postpone, because I didn't realize until I was doing my Robert's Rules training videos recently, that I've been using motion to table incorrectly. You only use a motion to table within a meeting. It's not to postpone, so specifically, and I have it here, too, in my Robert's Rules book, I verified it. So you only make a motion to table, I guess, if we're in the middle of business and a speaker walks in. We table the motion briefly during that meeting, not for the next meeting. So I just want to change table for postpone, so we're doing it right, in case any Robert's Rules gurus walk in.
To be perfect, you must be specific.
So are there any other questions on the policies? Okay, 5.2 is the intergovernmental agreement between Lake Hattaway Unified and the Arizona Department of Education to host statewide information systems synergy. Let's see, Mr. Murray, Ms. Minor, anybody want to, anybody have anything to say about this item, or does anybody have any questions?
John, did you want to share with the information I forwarded to you via email regarding your questions?
I got most of them answered, and the contract actually clarifies quite a bit. You know, one of my concerns is I see a lot of things in here that are covering the state's right to terminate this agreement. I don't see anything that says if the state isn't performing that we can terminate the agreement. We have to give a 30-day written notice to terminate based on the contract. You know, if, let's say they have a long period of time of downtime, and it's just not a beneficial arrangement not being able to access the online gradebook anymore, we can't terminate our agreement with them unless we give them a 30-day notice. But if we don't perform, they can terminate at any point for a variety of reasons, written in the contract in Article 7, Section B, termination for cause.
So are you suggesting we take out the 30 days?
No. No, 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 I'm just saying, this is a standard form, and they're going to insist on it. I think we just need to be aware.
Okay.
That we're on the hook for 30 days if the state is out of bounds, the way they've written this. Do we have a working copy of our data locally stored anywhere?
We do not. I believe that was it, that email.
It was, it was. And according to the agreement, we should both have five years of complete records that are associated with this agreement. And if we don't have it, we need to start finding a way to get that set up, even if it's requesting a monthly copy of their backup.
And I did, we had talked about that in our email, so I did forward that to Diana, and Diana's suggestion was that we do it at the end of each semester versus monthly.
I just, I just don't want to be in a position, because the teachers, you're still keeping a local gradebook?
Right.
Okay.
Well, no, they're keeping a gradebook in synergy, not a separate one.
Okay, so we have, we have no local copy. If we were to go down mid-semester, how would?
They can keep two gradebooks.
If we were to go down mid-semester, how would we keep report cards going?
How would we keep, I don't know. I guess we would have to discuss that.
That's, that's something that I think we need to look at in relation to this agreement, and what their expectations are of us.
But I think, I think ADE can pull that information for us, because they have it stored also.
Yeah, we are, hi, Mar, the PDF every quarter.
The records get stored post-finishing of our grades. We.
At the end of the school year. Right, at the end of the school year.
Well, ended each quarter, as we say each quarter individually as we complete.
And then, and then I'm looking through, I'm seeing what I believe are good controls, there are federal standards in place that both parties are agreeing to as far as confidentiality of information. I'm very happy with that. There's a confidentiality clause in here as well about disclosure, I'm happy to see that as well. I'm kind of wondering why our procurement department gets a notice on communication, but not, say, the head of our business department?
I wouldn't need to be able to answer that.
Yeah, I just, it's just, it's just a point of interest to me that procurement is getting this and not the business department in general. I think that that might be a better place to notice, just so that, just so that we don't have a drag internally when we get a notice. And then on the back end of this, in the Exhibit A, you know, some of the stuff, this looks like they just pushed this out where it's, it's an older contract, but they're just updating, because it still says that we're in implementation in Exhibit A, and we should be an ongoing. So just FYI, just to look at that. That's what I got.
That's it?
That's it.
That's it?
That's it.
All right. My only question is, do we know, did we ever get an answer on why we went from $6.50 per student to $7.50 per student?
Actually, I found that. So when I looked at last year's contract, last year's contract had the renewal rate at $7.50 per student. It was already listed within the documentation inside the contract.
Okay.
So I don't know where we got $6.50, if that was the year prior to the point of renewal, but it was listed as the point of renewal dollars within the contract. So I didn't see a price increase, I saw something that we knew going into the contract that maybe hit staff out of left field for some reason.
Any other questions on 5.2? Item 6.1, resolution authorizing the issuance of sale of school improvement bonds. And I think everybody got a copy, oh yeah, everybody did, Terry printed a copy for everybody of the resolution.
I have a question. Mike, assuming that we approve this next week at the board meeting, how soon will the sale of the bonds occur?
I believe they are targeting April or May.
Okay, the Fed is supposed to raise the rates tomorrow, it's predicted, and again in May, I think. So what, what interest rate are you told that we will have to pay on those bonds?
I don't, I don't believe we have all the details to that yet. They'll be here next Tuesday to actually do a formal presentation, and we'll also have their legal, their legal here as well.
If I remember right, I spoke with Mike from Stifel, part of Citizens for Hattaway Schools. If I remember right, it's between 3% and 4% is what they projected.
I hope that's still true.
I, we're going to be close.
Mike, I'm just wondering, as we go through these various bond issues, are we going to receive a creeping on the intended application of that particular segment of the bond, and would we plan on acting it? The reason I'm asking is not so much across, we can find out that information by asking you, but the public might want to hear what our plans are and how we're rolling it out.
I believe we.
It's attached.
I'm monthly board, I think we're.
It's attached with the resolution, yeah. What we're, what the intended projects are for 2017.
I asked, I asked that today.
Yeah.
I was, I was buying to pick up the financial report, and in the process of that, I raised the question on, what plan are we using for spending the money? And we're using the Citizens for Hattaway Schools plan that was outlined in a line-item format.
Yeah, I understand, I mean, I don't have a problem with that, but my, my concern is that a lot of people weren't actively involved in that, and they're not going to be reading through this form. And just a rough summary, when we float a bond saying, this bond was designed to cover this, 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 and this, and we plan on rolling this out at this time, and this, would inform the public of what we're doing. Not that we need it, but they may have a sincere interest in seeing what our thought process is.
Do you think a one sheet would be appropriate, where we took it and we took what we are going to spend in a less line-item format?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with a one sheet, I'm just saying that the public presentation in and of itself would lead more confidence to the public. And just think about it, you know?
Depending on what we would like, we can, we can do formal presentations, monthly, quarterly, and we can do just very basic, but we can keep you, we can keep you updated as often as you want us to.
Is there any way to develop a project list and have a project completion point against the list that's presented monthly?
I think we've agreed that we're going to communicate every dollar that we're going to spend. I don't think that that's something that we need to worry about between now and Tuesday.
Right.
I think that's, I think we've got our 14, is that 14 pages?
Yes.
Packet, that's the detail of what we're going to do, and I think we'll have time to decide.
I agree, I'm just putting it out for us to think.
I'm a fan of one-pagers, so yes, I like that idea, just, you know, for efficiency going forward, but everything's going to come before the board before we do anything, so I like that idea, but I don't think it's something that we need to do between now and, and the board meeting on Tuesday, because we're just approving to go out to sell the bonds.
What if on the monthly agenda, under informational items, we just have a one or two-minute update on what's going on there? There is no update?
Diana already committed to that. There will be an ongoing monthly update on whatever we're doing with the bonds, so that'll be added to the doc. So, any other questions on the resolution? That'll be fun reading. 6.2, approval of lease agreement with ABC Asphalt LLC. I believe that this has to do with adjacent ways, this.
No.
Oh, is this a different one?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
This is, they're leasing property.
Oh, this is the lease. Sorry. Okay. Mr. Murray?
The, this company came to us requesting use of one of our pieces of property. We pulled an old lease that was used a couple of years ago for a similar type of a project or lease agreement, and that's how we came up with the dollar figure you see and the lease agreement that is in front of you. It was also sent over to legal for their approval as well. We added a provision in there that upon completion, that we'll have none of our employees go over and inspect the site to make sure that they're not leaving anything there that we're going to have to dispose of later at our expense, making sure it's tidy.
That was my big concern. I don't, I don't mind leasing people property, but you want to make sure they haven't left any, especially with asphalt, any oil or anything.
And I think, as I went through that contract, I think it specifically says in there.
Yeah, there is.
There's verbiage to that, and I'm going to look somewhere.
It does, and we added, we added that for this, this particular.
So essentially, they just want to use a lot of ours to store their equipment for two months, and we're going to make a whopping 300 bucks off of it, but, hey, $300 is better than nothing.
The only, the only other question, the only other question I had was, being an asphalt company and sticky, smelly machinery, we're not looking at any neighbor problems, are we?
That's also built into the agreement, that they need to notify the surrounding residents there.
We live directly across the street from that, and so, yeah, we'll have early mornings, but that's okay.
Put you on informational report.
Don't know if there's anything else.
So, so make sure the lot's clean when they're done.
They usually leave it much better than it was.
And, and as far as the waste goes, that's, that's Article 5, Subsection A, waste on premises or any other nuisance. So it's, it's all.
I think we, we had a new item added, 6.11, so that would be 6.11, so that comes after 6.10.
Right.
Okay.
Yes, I know.
I thought in my head that it should come after 6.2, but I see, see, with my eyesight, I thought it was 6.11, and now I see it just 6.
The only thing similar is asphalt, I think.
I don't know how to tell you. Moving on.
Okay, 6.4. Wait, did I skip one? No, I did. 6.3, first presentation review of revised policy IKFA early graduation. It seems like the only change that they're asking to, I don't know if Ms. Minor wants to speak about it, but it looks like they are just requesting to be notified the day before the first day of the school year for early graduations, so that there's time to prepare.
Right, exactly. So our counselors are aware of the classes the students are taking, and I talked to Mr. Becker today about that, so.
So that somebody can't come in November and say, I want to graduate in December, and?
Yes, but it's also to limit the number of outside classes that students can take.
Okay.
And so what we're having is students are taking five online classes in addition to their classes that they're taking on campus, and then they're suffering, and we're ending up with kids that aren't graduating on time and missing days of school to do their online work, and it's really spiraled out of control.
Okay. It seems very reasonable that you would have a semester to graduate somebody, notice. I don't have any questions. Does anybody have questions?
It's a brave new world.
6.4, approval to proceed with request for proposal for school psychologist.
Madam President, we have had two openings this year. We normally have four school psychologists. We've been limping along on two. We did provide some additional clerical support. We still have not been able to fill those positions, so we're looking at having to look at consideration of contracting for next year. This is the time for us to do that, if we hope to at least give increased support.
Aggie, there's a cost to contracting that I think is significantly higher than hiring someone. Is the cost to contract less than it would cost us to raise our pay to attract qualified candidates?
I do believe so. I mean, we talked to that, because that's part of the, we are seeing individuals that are going into contracted providers, because it does provide a different lifestyle, if you will, they want to travel, they want to have that experience. But you are looking at about $15,000 that we're paying for that third-party provider, that they're receiving pretty much a finder's fee, if you will, and they're, they're employed. But when we look at the backside of what it costs for an employee, we've got to pay for their retirement, their insurance, so it's not just the salary. So if you take a $45,000 employee and you add on to that, there is still about $20,000 to $25,000 difference, you know, at least, so you're paying for that third party.
Okay.
Aggie, in the requirements, you use the word "we require," and then you have several requirements, and one says that they will be, this person must be able to administer score and interpret assessments in both Spanish and English, and you've got Spanish. score, and interpret assessments in both Spanish and English, and you've got Spanish and English in boldface. What are we doing now when we have to assess a student who speaks Spanish? How do we make up for that?
That is actually a clerical error on here, although we have in the past required that. We do actually contract out through the SAVE contract for bilingual. Our population doesn't warrant a full-time person who can, but if we can obtain someone who can do it, we can remove the requirements for us to contract out for that services. So we are looking for someone who can do both if we can. If not, we're still looking for someone who can do it in English.
I just thought maybe someone interested in the job, especially once you use the word "require" and in boldface, that might keep someone from up on...
We'll make sure that that is addressed, there's not a... It's preferred that they are, but it's not mandatory. Because we are able to contract through the SAVE part-time services for that.
Any other questions? Okay, 6.5, approval of certified administrative supervisor staff for 1718 and staff moving from non-continuing to continuing. Are there any questions on 6.5?
This is our list of certified staff that will be offered contracts for the 1718 school year, and I did talk with Legal today, and they are currently reviewing those contracts, and she believes she'll have those back to us no later than tomorrow. So our hope is that both our certified and support staff contracts will be ready to be signed by you, Madam President, after the board meeting next week.
Do we have any anticipation as to what our net is going to be on staff at this point?
Currently, we sent out the intent to return slips in the end of January, and I think I shared that on the personnel report at our last board meeting regarding the number that had returned them, saying they were not coming back. That's roughly about 20-ish personnel right now.
Lot better than last year.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And, and again, that's not binding, so until they're required to return their contracts and they don't, we're not going to know for sure. But the majority of those people have provided us with their letters of resignation as a follow-up, so...
And then, what is the drop date on the, on the contracts? When do they happen?
Certified staff have 15 days to return them once they've received them.
Okay.
Our hope is to get those out prior to sprint break.
And are these going out with a cover sheet showing total confidence?
Correct. Mike's department's working on that right now.
Perfect.
So, I have two questions, and one is, I'm just curious why nurses aren't included in certified. That's just one question, just because they have to have so many certifications. And then my other question is, is there a contingency for certified or classified if the governor increases the education budget?
There is a section that talks about whether or not the state changes their budget issues.
Isn't that more focused on reduction, though, not increase?
It is, it is. It is one.
So I guess my question would be, and it's not that I have huge hopes for this, but if he did increase the budget...
You're not holding your breath?
No. Would it, would we then, would that go to our staff? Would, is there any type, or can we discuss that?
I think, yeah, we, what we would do is we could discuss that. I think, you know, in the past with our monies and things of that nature, then we have turned around and given staff, you know, extra pay on top of, like a one-time situation or something. So I think it would need to be looked at based on how much it actually is, so...
And also the needs of the district, because, you know, we have very large class sizes, so we can look at the whole picture.
Right. Okay.
As far as the nurses and, and their being classified as support staff, I don't know that...
Can you address that? Department of Education, when we look at the certified, it's kind of looking at the certificates coming through the Department of Education. Speech therapists were once speech, language impaired teachers. They have changed and shifted some, some of that from a speech pathologist. They're kind of an exception to why they are still considered on that because they do actually issue a certificate through the Department of Education. Nurses are through the Department of Health Services, so are occupational therapists and physical therapists. So they're, they're, they're kind of what we call that in-between because they're not your typical just at-will employee, but it's because of the nature of where the licensure is issued and you're coming through the legislation process.
And then when you look at the budget for how money from the state is allocated, then there's a line item just for certi, certified people, and then nurses come under...
Support service staff.
And so if we were to, it would be confusing to the state and the newspaper, and it, it just wouldn't follow the same, as, as we've done it in the past. It just wouldn't work. Bureaucracy wins out everything.
Okay. But we do psychologists, and they're not...
They actually give licenses to the Department of Education.
They do.
They do.
Okay. So you answered the question, thank you. Any other questions on 6.5 for certified? Okay, 6.6 is for the approval of support staff. And then my own, I, I have an immediate question. Do we have a contract for them that support staff signs?
They have what's called an at-will memo.
Okay.
Can, it's not entitled, it's not a contract per se.
Well, can we see, just see a copy of that, just because it's not in there, and I, I don't think I've seen one of those, although I bet I'll see some.
I bet you will.
Okay, any questions on the support staff? Okay, 6.7 is the approval of vouchers and student activity funds, and I just wanted to say, great job, Mr. Murray, on getting us caught up. I noticed that February and February were both in there. That was nice to see. Any questions on the vouchers? Student activity funds or auxiliary funds?
Capital, capital, capital outlay? What was that?
That was, I believe, the bus barn, the signature. Yeah, payment to Horizon to, for the, for the bus barn, Horizon Community Bank.
You paid it off?
What? Yeah, that was the, the money we received from Cypress in the city, and then it was deposited, and we paid it off.
So we took the money from Cypress and did exactly what we said we would do with it?
Exactly.
Perfect.
Could I suggest we think about something in the future, not necessarily, but on these vouchers, when we have a line item that exceeds, it's just pick a number, $40,000, that we get a supplemental sheet breaking that down so we know what the $40,000 was spent on. I'm just saying, we're talking big chunks of money here, and we have no way of knowing for sure where all that allocation is. We can talk about it later, but pick a certain level where we say, after this level, we'd like to see a breakdown.
Isn't it more fun, though, to ask lives so that we can get the answer for everybody?
Mike, dance as well.
I have, I have docs next to those things that are about $40,000 in bucks that you asked for.
You understand what I'm saying, Mike.
And I have it here.
We might want to just change the title. Again, we're picking from consent calendar item to action item since we pulled these out, and, and if that's not an easy fix, then that's fine. It is, okay. Any other questions having to do with the vouchers? Okay. Moving along to 6.8, approval of financial audit for FY 1516. So this is our certified annual financial report, and I know that we all just got our hard copies, so there may be some questions now, but I'm sure there will be some questions later. One of the questions that I have is, do we have to approve this next Tuesday because of some sort of timeline?
I, I believe so. There's, we have to upload these to, or we have to actually have it turned into a couple of different groups, so...
ADE.
ADE, yeah. So we already had two, two extensions, so we need to, we're kind of under a time constraint here to get it approved.
Okay.
So, this is the comprehensive annual financial report. Would you term this an audit of the district?
It's a, it's a, I believe it's a comprehensive audit of the district.
That we do annually.
Annually.
This is, this is important because there's a, because of the way that we have to title this, the public believes that we are not audited annually, and this is it right here on the desk. I looked through this, I haven't gone in detail with it, but I looked through this electronically and in print briefly. It looks really good. I, I think that we've, we've gotten a couple of things finally settled, especially at the EBT. The one concern I have is, is in the EBT on page 41 of, of the report. On page 41, it shows that at the end of last year, the available balance in our EBT was $880,000 and change. This is something where we had spent just shy of $6 million last year in claims, and a contribution of 4.2 million, off the top of my head. In that, do we have a, a good financial picture that you can bring to the board of where the EBT is now? Because it sounds like we've spent through pretty much all the reserves at this point, and we're operating, for lack of a better term, paycheck to paycheck in EBT based on whatever is in this audit.
We, we are in the process of actually having an outside accountant, if you will, go through and actually give us up-to-date or the EBT, and, and up-to-date balanced spreadsheet going through all of the financials, profit and loss statement, so that that's very transparent, and that he's going all the way back to July of this fiscal year to make sure that all of that is, is now available for all of us to see. I know that part of your voucher, and I was, I had that earmarked here with the PO in hand, we did make, is about just over $1 million deposit in, in January, it was, to the EBT.
Speaking of that, are, are we levelizing our payments to the EBT over the course of, say, nine months or a year, or are we dropping it specific times larger amounts?
We're trying to get to that point to where it's, it's more of a, of a regular deposit into the EBT.
Okay.
And with the accountant on board, we're hoping to, to make sure that, we're hoping that that will happen sooner than later.
Just, just something that kind of jumped out at me that had gotten so low, you know, if we're going to run the employee benefit trust, we need to make sure that we, we honor our commitment to our staff.
Correct.
This is the audit that they're, they should be presenting at their next meeting. Is that what, the numbers that you're working off are?
Yes.
Okay. And was this the instructional procurement fund deposit?
Are you going off the voucher?
Yeah. 120?
Actually, no, that was, it was out of maintenance and operations fund 001, because that was almost 1.3 million.
Oh, that's what I was looking at, sorry.
Yeah, it's 1.066 million. Of, of that 1.3 million went to EBT.
Okay. 1.066.
066.
This is why you should have a breakdown.
I, I call this the education of new board members, but if I'm reading this audit correctly, I had always been under the assumption that when we put money aside for our employees for their retirement, that it, it goes to the state and to the Arizona State Retirement Fund where that is invested, and I know Arizona has a very safe system compared to many other states. But in reading the audit, it looks as if money is invested in the Mojave County, by the Mojave County School Superintendent.
Than a treasurer. I think it's the treasurer.
Well, well, I thought it said, but maybe the treasurer ends up doing it. I, I agree, but is our, is, is that what's happening? That it's, that, that, that that money is being invested there, and what investments are we invested in? I'm just, it's just a cause of concern for me. I can't, I just never heard of that.
Are you, are you speaking just for ASRS, or do you want...
Well, it doesn't mean, this doesn't mention ASR, or it makes it look as, as if it is the money that our employees expect someday to get in their retirement. If I'm reading it correctly, and maybe I'm not, and at some point, let's see, I think it was on page 66, it suggests that we're getting an 8% rate of return. What in the, in the, in the last recession was paying 8% rate of return? I'm, I'm really interested to know what that is.
I'll, I'll find that out for you.
That's the actuarial assumption.
Well, that didn't happen. I don't think so. And then apparently there's a lease obligation between 2022 and 2026. What lease obligation do we have out until that period of time? I mean, there are just lots of things here that I have questions about. I wish I didn't, we didn't have to approve this at the next meeting. And I had suggested that Nicole, maybe we should have, it would be an idea to have a public meeting, and people who wanted to come, and we could go through the, through the audit and make it available to the public, and maybe we would have questions to ask at that time.
I'm, I'm just going to step in and say that I think a lot of the questions that we have regarding the EBT are going to be answered the day after the board meeting because they have their next meeting, and their audit should be ready for us by then. I mean, it's, hasn't been ready...
Well, he's our, the accountant who was hired by the EBT is also, was also waiting for this document so that he can also continue on with what he needs to do. So saying that it'll be ready by then, it would be ideal if that were the case, but I'm, I'm not optimistic that that's going to happen right away because he is working off of...
Well, I'm not talking about the accountant, I'm talking about the audit.
Or just the audit, okay.
Just the audit. It was not ready at the last meeting, and it should have been at the last meeting, so if it's not at this meeting, then we, then there's a bigger problem. I'm not talking about Mike Bond.
Okay, no, we, we should have that...
And I think that will answer some questions, but we do have some unfunded liabilities.
We do.
So...
Yeah.
Anyways, I, I mean, we just got our hard copy today, and I, I know that it's a rush, and we can ask all the questions, I think, between now and the end of the week, and if we want to shoot Mike any specific questions, he can be prepared on Tuesday to answer that. And I agree, we should have a public meeting. We just can't do everything this year, but I agree that we should publicly go through our audits so that the public understands. I just don't think this month is the time to do it because there's so many unanswered questions to start with. So, but I'll, I'll try and shoot my questions to you between, before the weekend so you can cancel them. Where am I? Okay. 6.9, approval to secure network to transform teaching grant through the Arizona K-12 Center. Mr. Gardner or any of his surrogates want to speak on this?
I have those now. We have an opportunity to apply for an additional grant that was funded through the Arizona K-12 Center, through NAU, which houses the grant that we just applied for and, and we received. This is a, an additional grant. The purpose is to help teachers pursuing National Board certification, which is a lengthy process, but this helps us have additional resources to help them in that process. That's the purpose of this additional funds. So we would like to apply for that. We've completed the application, and we've justified why we would like to go after this grant, the benefits to our teachers applying for National Board certification.
So I have a couple of questions. I, if anybody else does, I think the grant went from 50 to 70,000, because that was my first question.
Yes, it did. That happened about two weeks ago. We were notified that there was additional funds involved in, in the grant.
Okay. That was my... That was my first question. I thought it was a fifty thousand dollar grant. This budget says seventy.
Yeah, I talked to Mr. Gardner about it the other day because I was concerned about the same thing. And he advised me that it had been raised to a seventy thousand dollar grant. So it is covering its own expenses. That's taken care of. Do you have other questions, or...
You want, you can go ahead first.
I had a meeting with Mr. Gardner the other day. There were some things that truly concerned me. And I'm much relieved after talking to him. Seventy thousand dollars was one. The other one, and I'm relieved, but I'm also an old man, and I've been around a couple of years. I brought up the question of double dipping because we've got another grant going on in three stages, addressing a very similar issue, right? And what I wanted to make sure of is that we weren't paying someone out of this grant and then paying them out of this grant. I was assured that's not happening. I still understand that there are ways I could elevate this grant and direct this money to another stipend. I mean, you know, I could split that. So I'm satisfied we're not double dipping. The finagling that's going on, other than that, I don't know, so I don't want to know.
Let me interject one thing. When we finally get a budget and some guidance on this budget for this particular grant, Michelle and Christie are going to be sharing what that will look like.
Okay.
And we'll present that to the board so you have everything lined up and it will be transparent on where those funds are being spent.
Another question I had was the structure of the two grants, to make sure that they're synergistically actually helping themselves. The second grant requires a director with an eight-man team. And depending on how they're going to structure all of this, you could actually have the same person in charge of both grants, coordinating them in a nine-man team operating out of three appropriate schools. But then the question is which people are you going to use for that? It's not my place to make that decision. I mean, if it was me, I would take my most qualified people seeking their certificate and ship them into the second grant. And my reason for that is they would then get mentoring experience and all the things they need leading into getting certified. But that was just my view. And I would like to know the structure eventually.
Ken, I'd like to have Christie, she's been involved directly with this. Would you like to address that?
Sure. The eight-member team that will oversee the NT-three grant is also the eight-member team that will oversee the master teacher grant because the two dovetail together. And so the eight-member team that we have is Diana, Brad, Denise, Michelle, myself, Jenny Sautner, Jan Esme, and Jamie Festa. So that is our eight-person team as of this point. And the reason we have those eight people is multiple stakeholders from multiple different perspectives to make sure that this grant money is all serving the same purpose.
And another thing I want to make sure is understood by the board. We're pursuing National Board certification in supporting that, that we believe that that's beneficial for teachers. However, if I have teachers in this district that don't want to pursue that, I don't want to feel like we're developing two systems where we have the haves and we have the have-nots, and that they're potentially could be creating a division between staff numbers. We're not forcing anyone to enter this. This is voluntary. We try to encourage with our mentor program that by year three, our new teachers in year three consider pre-candidacy, but it's not a requirement. And we do have some incentives for people that do go through the National Board certification process. We do award them fifteen hundred dollars, I believe, for three years after they become certified. And we believe that the process makes a teacher better in general. Overall, you should get a better, highly qualified instructor in front of students, which impacts student achievement. Now, is there any evidence that says that otherwise? We can get into a research discussion, but I'm not saying a National Board certified teacher is going to be an amazing teacher. Because there are teachers that aren't National Board certified that do a tremendous job in the classroom. But what this does is it offers them an opportunity to continue to develop in their profession. And there are these five core propositions that this state and nine other states are trying to utilize, so...
Yeah, we discussed this the other day, and I mean, I think we're on the same page. Two of the things that worry about, worry me, whenever I look at grants, I look at programs, I look at anything that. One, it can become what we call program management. It can become a resume builder where people are more concerned in building their resume than they are the eventual effect of the program itself. The other thing is, I don't want us to deliver, to develop a puppy mill. You know, National Board certification is well-recognized because a teacher puts forth their effort they put forth to achieve that certification. I don't want us to wind up developing a puppy mill when we spit out nationally-board certified teachers so that we can brag about it. But the people we spit out aren't the people who would normally have put their own effort forward. That's what worried me. I looked at this down below, and I see these workshops that we're going to send people to, and it says up to forty participants. Right now, we have, what, about eleven people in the program? So how are we going to get forty participants if we're not trying to generate a puppy mill? This worries me. I mean, I'm not saying we're doing it, but I'm saying the chance to fall into that gap is right there waiting for us. And I just want to make sure we're all aware of it so that we don't allow it to happen, especially with three grants piled on top of each other. These two, and then the first one has two subsequent steps. We could wind up with this becoming a full-time program job which has no relationship to student learning. And I don't want us to fall into that gap. If we're all aware of it, I'm fine with it.
Can I speak to that? So the National Board has changed. That's, the idea that it's a sticker for the best teachers is everything that the National Board is against. The idea that we should all be nationally-board certified teachers, just like we are all bar-certified lawyers or board-certified doctors. The goal eventually is, is that we are all up here. Everything with board certification is not outside the classroom. It is all focused on students, student achievement, what you do inside your classroom. And so even if people are not achieving at the end, they're becoming better teachers because of the process. It's all professional development that is tied directly to teaching, not something else besides that. It is the idea that I know my students, I choose what's best for my students, I implement it, I assess it, I reflect on it, I repeat. It's cyclical. And so everything about that is what makes a good teacher. The National Board part is that you can prove that piece. And so we want as many teachers as are willing to put in the effort to do that. But the idea is that National Board doesn't want to be just eight percent of teachers. We want a teaching army out there that we are saying, we are just like doctors and lawyers, and we are out there making a difference. And look, we're certified. We've said that we can accomplish these skills.
I think we're on the same page. I'm simply saying I'd rather see these three grants wind up with fifteen certified teachers than wind up with forty-five that are questionable. Do you understand where I'm coming from? And even though our intentions are as good as they are right now, we're going to have three years to fall into that gap I'm talking about. Three years to suddenly say, well, you know, we got to get some more people through here. We got to get this done. And I just want to mention it. I want it in everybody's mind that this has to be dedicated to the teachers who are willing to put forth the effort and are truly trying to become better teachers.
Well, completing National Board certification doesn't necessarily mean that you certify. Just completing the process is not enough. Your practice is assessed against a set of standards. So just completing the process does not mean you are a National Board certified teacher. You have to achieve certain scores. So we could have forty teachers who attempt National Board certification who don't all certify.
Okay, well, we're not that far off. I'm just trying to make this, people aware of this, that there is a potential here for us to fall into a situation we don't want to be in. The other thing is, I noticed all these things that are listed, but I also noticed on the grant it says, "The grant cannot pay any fees."
The grant cannot pay for a candidate's component. It cannot pay for National Board components. It can pay for professional learning to support candidacy, like workshops, institutes, and coaching Saturdays. It cannot pay component fees to the National Board.
I just want to make sure we're on the right...
We are.
And that's all I've got, really. I just wanted to bring these things up. I want people aware of them because this is going to be three years, and it's a strong potential for us to fall into that trap. And I don't want us to do that.
So I have a couple of questions too. But I first want to clarify that it's two grants. The master teacher grant is one.
Master teacher grant's a three-stage grant.
Right, but it's still just one grant?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to clear that real quick. So my question is, so we currently have eleven board certified teachers, correct?
That is correct.
How many of them are in the classroom?
Out of the eleven, eight are in the classroom.
Okay. And we've got eight in the pre-candidacy, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, and this might not even matter because we're going to, you mentioned that there's going to be a new budget that you guys are going to put together. So my questions were, for when you're putting the new budget together, when I look at this, I was concerned that it was the three names that were listed. It was like, who's going? Is it just these three?
No.
I saw the forty, but that didn't make sense to me because we only had eight in pre-candidacy, so why are we seeing forty people? And then here's my biggest concern. And I went to the National Board Certified, and I read through, and they've got the sixty-page document that tells all about it. And I have to admit that I did kind of chuckle at the five core propositions just because one through four seem like common sense. Now, there's more to five, the, you know, members of a learning community, and I know that's a whole nother thing. But when I looked at one through four, I'm like, isn't this what teachers already do? Like, teachers are committed to students and their learning? Like, isn't that what you're... So my concern was, I spent the day at the legislature yesterday, and I wish that we were spending some of time professionally developing our teachers to be able to advocate on behalf of their students that they care so much about in the same way that we do these grants, that I feel like sometimes pulls our teachers, and I don't want to confuse everybody, I'm not against this, but pulls our teachers to do all these other things, and nobody's watching the wolves in Phoenix. And nobody's got a comprehensive plan to combat what's going on there because everybody's really busy, you know, with their different projects, you know, and travel and workshops and all these things. And that was my only concern. Does that make sense? I'm not against this program, but I do see how much time it takes. I've heard you talk about it.
So it, and I did it, I mean, I did it ten years ago. I had to find who I was as a teacher and know that I could prove that I was an amazing teacher, that it just wasn't like, I'm an awesome teacher. But I put my practice up to be judged, and I also reflected on my own practice. And that caused me to grow up. And my passion is, like Carol's passion, is political. But I don't think that I could be as effective as I am if I hadn't, A, found my voice and wasn't as sure as I was about who I was as a teacher because of National Board. And so I think the process of looking inward at your teaching skills helps you then look outward, and whether it is Jimmy who has a passion for helping students be leaders, or it's Christie who has a passion of growing new teachers. We all have different passions that make us tick, but I think it has to start with solid teaching. And this is the baseline of where solid teaching starts.
See, I think one of the things, and people think that I'm anti, I'm not. I'm not against this grant. I think one of the things that I think we really need to keep in our mind, we're talking, in here you talk about teacher attrition. You had a fire to go ahead and search for this thing, and to you, it means a great deal. But you can have a teacher sitting next to you who's an outstanding teacher who has no desire to go for the board certification. But if, and I'm just saying if, this program begins to lay pressure on the teachers, then that's one more pressure that could cause them to leave our district. I just want you aware of that. You can't lay this as a pressure plate on the teachers and then accept, expect them to be all happy about it. And we need to understand that.
I think Brad made that very clear, that there would be no...
This is all voluntary. We're just lucky that we're being given the opportunity to go after some resources that are much needed. And then the other part about this, I think that's been, hasn't been mentioned yet, is we have a tremendous turnover. And that hasn't changed, so my thinking is, what do we need to do differently? And to me, the key is the mentor program. It seems to me that when a new teacher has a high-quality mentor in place, there's a connection that happens. And then they can work on their craft over time with the aid of that mentor. And right now, our mentor pool is very shallow. And those that are good are being stretched because we just don't have enough. And so this helps grow that pool. And so that's, I'm encouraged that we can continue to try to do that.
You know, I see this, and I see this in a lot of different areas in the district. I think the big tell for us in the district is when we look at a salary schedule, and we look at who fits where in a salary schedule. We start to unpack twenty years of freeze and unfreeze, and did we get a raise? Did we not get a raise? Did we raise the base, but not for these people? What we see in that is we see a lot of compression into the middle, and we see a lot of infill at the bottom end. The top end is the mentor pool. We've lost that. The bottom end is at, what, forty percent, Brad?
Pretty close.
So forty percent of our district is at that bottom end. They're at that entry-level end. And I, I've seen this in my business. I've seen this in industry as I've worked. What we need at Lake House Unified School District is we need a way to start with welcoming people in. How do we bring them in? What does that initial support system look like? And what is the pathway for advancement and success look like in our district? If you never get past, "I want to teach kindergarten, I will never be certified, and my passion is just to get the little kids, when they come into the district, to, you know, count and do the alphabet and the basic things in life," great. That's your place in the district. But if you want to advance, and we're not talking, you know, huge numbers here when we say forty people in a program and we're hoping for fifteen graduates. But if you want to advance, what does that look like? How do we get there? And how do we move someone from the entry point in the district into Mr. Murray's chair? Because somebody will eventually want to move up into a director's position. What does that look like? What is our criteria to do that? How do we get somebody into an assistant principal's position from the teacher's chair? These are things that we have to think about as a district. And it doesn't mean every last employee is going to be homegrown, but we have to offer opportunity. Where there's no opportunity, people leave. And it's a part of that package, just like salary is. Just like making sure we don't have inversion and compression in that schedule. To me, I have some of the same concerns Al does. I've watched this in my professional career. Microsoft Certified System Engineer. It used to be you went, you did it, you were done. Now, it's every stinking time they change that server operating system, you do it all over again. I'm done certifying. I've been certified, meaning I'm certifiable. But the reality is, is I think you have to have that professional development course. And in education, this is what it looks like. We don't want to overdo it. We don't want to fall into some of the traps in overdoing it. You don't want to beat people over the head with it. But if there is an advantage to them and they have that professional desire, we need to have the ability to fulfill that.
I don't think anybody's against the grant. I think everybody is. I think everybody's just, has their own different perspective. And the only, and I wasn't trying to insinuate that everybody needs to be politically active. I just see this as very time-consuming, and so I was trying to point that out. And then when I think about all the other things that our teachers are doing, not just this, and, you know, we've got, we've got politics that are telling us how we're supposed to be measured in our classrooms, in our school sites, that everything's all planned out for us, and we have to meet all those metrics. And then we add new things at a local level. And I just wonder if anybody's counting all the balls that are being juggled that our teachers have to deal with. So that's the only reason that I bring it up. And my concerns were really with the budget, so I'm glad that that's going to be rewritten because that's where I saw my questions.
Just a quick comment on the budget.
Sure.
As part of the application process, you were not required to submit a budget. This is only a draft.
Filler. This was to submit the grant. I see, I mean...
Christie and I are going to Flagstaff March 28th, 29th, and that's where they'll identify, you know, how they would like to see us spend this grant. So this will absolutely be revised.
Okay.
I have a question, Christie and Jamie, and I don't know if there are any other certified board teachers there, are there? Do you wait for teachers to inquire about the program, or as you, you walk into a classroom and you realize you've got an outstanding teacher there, do you tell them about it, invite them, encourage them? How does that work?
We call it shoulder tapping, and it's really by word of mouth, noticing that someone might be interested. If someone displays, you know, amazing teaching ability, we shoulder tap, we invite them to talk about the process, we invite them to pre-candidacy. And pre-candidacy is really the opportunity for them to start seeing the types of writing that's involved, the standards, the directions, things like that. And then they can make an informed decision of, this is my pathway to teacher leadership, or this is not my pathway.
So a teacher who decides not to do it, and there are many personal reasons, you could be at the point like John is, you know, I'm done with this. I mean, I've been there, done that, is it's such a compliment to be noticed and to be recognized and to be invited to something like that. So I think that one thing alone, as long as you're inviting and shoulder tapping, it should take care of the, some of the issues that came up here.
And some people take pre-candidacy and decide, this is not my path at this time, but it might be in a few years.
Right.
Or this is not my path, but now at least I know what the path is, and I can support the teacher next door if they choose to go through National Board certification.
Can I speak on that one? Please. Because I've done the pre-candidacy, and I made the choice not, but I see it as a recruitment for that retention. But as I sit here and reflect, as a woman that's chosen not to do it, but I do see when we go out to recruit, we have this opportunity that we can, that we can say we can offer in three years, if you stay with us long enough, and if that grant continues. But that, that's how I view it for the retention piece and the recruiting piece. Like, we can recruit, and then we can retain because we have this out there as an option. And that's how I view it.
You know, as I look at education and having been in it for so long, we are a learning institution, and I like to think that everyone, especially every teacher, is a life, just a little phrase, a lifelong learner. But there's something about being a lifelong learner where you retain curiosity, there's always more research about brain and how children take in information, so you have to organize it a certain way, how their brain stores it, they'll always be, and how their brain retrieves it. For the next hundred, three hundred years, there will always be more research on that kind of thing. And I, you know, I even have never talked to Denise about it, I mean, even to have the application to say, what professional journals do you subscribe to for new principals coming in? I mean, I'm looking for those kinds of people. And I, even though I got to that point like John did, I hate to think that John, being as young as he is, is not going to be a lifelong learner anymore in his profession. I thought you didn't want to do those.
I don't want to be certified.
I understand.
I don't take the same test over and over again.
No, I understand, but I just think that's who we're looking for, if that's what we have to have. And this is just one more way to develop those people and give an avenue, hopefully, for the rest of their professional career to utilize.
I think we all agree with Nicole. I think we're all on the same page with this grant. We just want to make sure we give you any insights that might help. And I really don't want to see teachers feel like this has become a burden. I don't want, I don't want it to get to the point where after the first year of that first grant, we may not be where we want to be, so we start pressuring people for the second part of the grant. They've got enough pressure in the classroom, they don't need more.
I think we, I think we're all on the same page, and I think we should save some of our discussion for Tuesday. But I, I missed one of the group of eight. So I had Diana, Brad, Michelle, Jamie, Festa, Olson, Sotner, Esme, and one more.
Festa, did you get Jamie Festa?
Yep.
Okay, Diana, Brad, Denise.
Denise. I don't have any other questions. Anybody else? Okay. Six point one zero, approval to increase school meal prices. And that's Mr. Murray's.
You'll find attached the USDA equity in school lunch pricing provision. It addresses the reimbursement rates for meals and, and tape is here from our food service department. If you'd like to just briefly share what we are proposing here in this rationale.
Okay. Every year USDA comes up with a paid lunch equity tool, and what they want to do is, we have to raise our meal prices, our paid meal prices up to meet what the paid student pays, which is adjusted for inflation. With how our meal prices are, we will never get to where USDA technically wants us to be. But based on our weighted averages, we do need to raise our prices to meet USDA requirements by ten cents for lunches. We also decided that our breakfast price at a dollar ten has been stable for, since 2008, 2009. Wages have gone up, so we figured now is the time, maybe since we're doing lunch, we should do breakfast also.
So this is really not something that we've just decided to raise prices. This is a requirement.
Right, this is a USDA requirement.
This is the federal government saying, thou shalt raise your prices.
Yes.
When they're reimbursing us for X amount of dollars, is we going to be somewhat equitable and close to that dollar as possible?
Yeah. And last year, we didn't raise prices. I sent a letter to ADE letting them know that we had surplus funds, that we'd incorporate that back into our program, which we did. So we did go for a year without having to raise them. And I just don't think if I sent a letter again this year that they would let us skate.
Does anybody have any questions?
Dave, you got this right. We don't want a bunch of angry tenants.
Okay, is that it?
That's a, that was a lot of people for these.
Except for six point eleven.
Oh, yeah. Oh, sorry, that was an addition, right?
Yeah.
There's six eleven, there it is.
That's the base.
Approval of paving projects at Nautilus Elementary School and Thunderbolt Middle School. Mr. Murray or Mr. Simpson?
I can just start.
Okay.
As most of you know, the adjacent ways funds, in order to use them now, we have to go through the school facilities board for them to approve adjacent ways funding projects. So it's no longer up to us to determine what is and what isn't. We have to go through the school facilities board to get their approval, to say that this is indeed an adjacent ways funded project. So Mr. Simpson has gone out and been working very, actually, very busily. You can see the pictures there regarding a couple of our schools. He's been to Phoenix to present this to the school facilities board. And if you'd like to go ahead and just share what we propose to do.
Well, as you can see, I don't know if you have the maps for Nautilus and Thunderbolt, what the school facilities board asks for is now, anything over fifty thousand dollars has to go in front of their board to be approved, and it can take up to sixty days to do that. Anything under fifty thousand, it goes into a category of green or yellow, and that can be approved by our liaison once we give him who's doing the work, what the cost is, and show them, like I said, pictures. And we have to also have stamped drawings from the R.C. Fire Marshal showing that those are actual routes they're using in order to get that approved. And once that's approved, then we can move forward with it. So that's why we have two different projects. It was kind of like, all right, here's one above fifty, here's one below fifty, to find out what their actual rules were. They, I think we're like the third project in the state for actual asphalt. Because people do piping and all kinds of stuff with that. Will we be able to use some of our adjacent ways money at the high school? Hoping so. We're hearing that we might be able to supplement some of our adjacent ways funds for the high school when we start that project up there. But for as far as that, like, if you can see where the yellow is, that's where we're going to do sealant on Thunderbolt, and then the red will be remove and replace asphalt. And then on Nautilus, all the red is going to be crack seal and seal coat for work that was done about three years ago when we had it done, it used to be done, it's supposed to be done every two years, we're at the third year now.
I have a question. Maybe I just want to make sure I'm reading this. Matt, this is Nautilus. This work will be done only on places that are red. For example, if I'm looking at it correctly, where the cars are parked, that will not be done?
Correct.
Yes and no. Yes, if I can find funds, other funds to do that, I'm going to finish that part because it's very small. It's very small, that little part that we got, because we've got so much of that red part, we were able to get approved by our Fire Marshal, that that leaves just a small part that's almost a miniscule.
But the school facilities board won't approve our spending our adjacent ways money for anything but the red.
Right.
And so, okay, I just want to make sure.
It has to be for fire, buses, police, ambulance, that kind of stuff.
Okay, thank you. And that's because of the requirements of adjacent ways to move them themselves.
So we took it in the shorts last year when we did our paving project with our adjacent ways. We took it on two fronts. First thing is, is that people were doubting the quality of the pavement needed to be removed and replaced. Do we have pictures of current conditions of the asphalt at both of these schools and why we're undertaking these projects?
Yes, I have pictures of them.
Okay. Are those, is it possible for copies of those to the board meeting?
Sure.
Okay. Secondly, I see one quoted here. Did we take this to any local contractor?
No, we took it, we got it on a state contract. It was the best pricing that we could get.
Okay, but we didn't ask anybody local?
No, we went to state. And I have to take, I have to get, take one bid to this, when I go to the school facilities board, that's like, take one, they only want one bid, procurement's on us.
Right.
So we take one bid for them. And it's a state contract.
Is cactus required to purchase material here?
Yes, they would, all the asphalt they buy would be bought locally.
Okay. I would like to see procurement stop just grabbing state contracts, and I would like to see procurement start trying to work with local contractors, even if they aren't a little bit. And the reason why is because we are taking flak in our local contracting community because they're not seeing this, this stuff go out. You know, we're taking money out of our local community, and we really want all these projects done. In this case, we're talking about adjacent ways, which is in addition to the tax bill that the person would normally have. And when it doesn't go to the local contractor, I don't think we're being very good stewards, that we're not at least attempting to try and inject this money back into our economy as much as possible.
We always have, just like we, on our project we did out here, I think eighty-four percent of our builders on our bus barn out here were local.
I understand that, but when I went to the Kriba meeting that Mr. Murray and I attended, we have issues with our local contracting community, and they're very apparent when you sit down with them. And I think that, especially with, when we've got bond money coming up and larger projects, that we need to start thinking and being a little bit smarter about how we interact with our local community on projects like this.
We always have, I've always gone out for three bids on everything other than the asphalt. Nobody's been able to meet our requirements for our time zones on our local, for our asphalt. Same way the city goes out for, uses these same contractors, because nobody local can do the work.
And I appreciate that, but it's always nice to be asked.
And we always ask, we always go for bids. This one, because it was on a timeframe, they can meet our time constraints of when we're trying to get it done. As you know, I have a small window to get things done.
I agree.
That's the problem with the local contractors, they can't meet our local time constraints. I'll ask them, we've always asked them. We always ask for bids. Whenever I do any procurement, we get three bids. On this one, we just did one because of our time constraint, is all that. But I can get three bids on everything, I always have.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's my thing, is to use local contractors.
Were we going to do a workshop with the local builders? Wasn't that a suggestion to?
It wasn't a workshop.
That you already started, yeah.
And we did meet with Kriba, like Mr. Madsen just said, we did do that.
Okay.
And talked about the procurement process. Patty Basar was down there with myself, Mr. Madsen.
And Kriba, for people that don't know, is Colorado River...
Builders Association.
Right.
I've been to that Kriba meetings two or three times. When we go out there and we have those meetings like Patty's gone to, and we tell them how to do it, what to do. And on the last time when we did this project out here and told them how to get on our bidding list, I think there was probably fifty-some odd contractors there. I can give you a number of how many actually showed up and did that? Zero. I'm just saying, they always complain.
Sure.
But they don't show up, and they don't actually want to bid on our stuff. Right now, we having trouble getting bids on electrical, plumbing, almost everything we're doing because they're busy now, and they don't want to be bothered with us. Trying to get three bids, and we'll do it, but trying to get three from these people, they don't even want to bid on our stuff anymore. That's just because they're busy.
My question is this, though. When you talk to these twenty, thirty contractors and they didn't bid, did we advertise that that meeting, that conference took place? Here's the problem we're facing at the board.
Yes, we were in the paper, we had paper on the news, everything, yeah. Just like this last one.
The problem we're facing is, we know that everybody's doing what's right. We know they're doing the right thing. It's just that in a lot of cases, the public doesn't know it. They don't see it. It's happening out of their vision. And I'm just saying, if we do things like this, we need to make sure that we say, hey, on Friday, we held a meeting with forty contractors, we covered how to buy and how to do that. And the public knows what we're doing, they know how we're interacting.
I get that. We need to press release.
That's...
Out of my realm.
Right. And the time constraint that you're referring to is spring break. You want to get this done over spring break?
That's what we're hopeful. So like I said, I have no problem getting three bids on everything. I'm good with that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Okay, let's see. So our next meeting will be next Tuesday, March fourteenth at 6:00 P.M. We're not going to do any informational reports till then, so kind of get a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Thinking it.
This is funny. Carol Moore?
Yes.
With the master?
Yes.
That one?
Yes.
Thank you.